Do you keep that timer running all day, Kim?
Just leading up to the meeting, I come in and check it every now and then, make sure that the meeting's still on. You do pull me well, I do come and turn it on well early in the day. So we can wait a second while we turn the volume off so we don't get no giant echo in here. That does come on.
Well, it's seven o'clock, so we got called the meeting to order. Barbara, you have an addition to the agenda?
I do. Under current business, if we could add 5.6 Alberta municipalities distinguished service award nomination.
Okay. Any other additions to the agenda? Hearing none, somebody wish to move the agenda as amended, Richard. Any discussion on Richard's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question out of the paper. Anybody opposed? Hearing none, it's carried, it's carried, you know, sorry. Okay, moving on to the regular council meeting of May 23rd. Any air's missions, questions, that was just updated. Okay, if not, Judy moves. Okay, any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question out of the paper. It's carried, sorry again. Okay, moving on to correspondent, Volkan River Regional Services Commission, they're adding a report. Any questions or concerns on that one? It's kind of interesting, I appreciate the history on it because quite often we don't remember any of the history of how it started, when and where and where and how, so I thought that was kind of neat. Okay, any questions on that one at all? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the next one, which is the letter from the deputy minister for the libraries.
We'd already received this letter and forwarded it, so this is just for the extension of the deadline.
Okay, any thoughts or questions on that? So then we went on to the letter. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, moving on to 4.3, which is the letter from the county from May 31st.
This is the letter that we receive every year, and it just covers the two that, for the arena pool that are covered in the agreement, and they're paying, as you know, for the programming as we do when we report to them quarterly and may decide what they're going to anticipate it, so.
And then we'll add this to the, for public meetings too.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, any questions on any of these three? Okay.
Just for the letter from the county here, is that? Is that the timeline that we should be? That we're going to have from now on, just to?
The, when they put in there, we have to have it submitted by, that's for most of it, it's, this is their generic letter for the reports, so we're actually requesting quarterly with our meetings, and they're fine with that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, any other questions? If not, so we wish to? Okay. Calls, moves to file the correspondence, any question on Cole's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question out of the paper. It's carried, you have to answer. Okay, thank you, moving on to current business. County cruisers are requesting road closure, same as what they requested in the past. Any questions on?
I can motion to make the recommendation that council approves temporary road closure, Center Street from First Avenue to Third Avenue, and Second Avenue from First Street north to First Street south on July 15th, 2022, from 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. to accommodate the Vulcan County Cruises Car Club show and chat.
Excellent.
I see that.
Really, thank you for being able to read that that fast.
He won't walk from your school, will he?
Any question on Will's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question out of the paper. It's carried. Okay, moving on to the Whispering Willows Lane Sewer Infrastructure Project. Everybody's had an opportunity to read that and see how it came in below guestimates.
Yeah, so our original anticipation was $180,000 for this project. Overall, with engineering and tender, we're sitting at $147,000. So... They had a successful six bids, you can see all of the bid prices that came in for the project. Black East Site Works, obviously was the most with the nine-day turnaround. They've submitted their... Also includes a $14,000 contingency at UST, and SEMA's made the recommendation to conform with the contract at $160,750.
Judy?
I just, we were happy with the job that you did, but...
Other than the delay over the winter, yes. Yeah, the work itself was, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a recommendation then that council approves construction new sanitary sewer infrastructure on Whispering Willows Lane as per the local improvement plan approved on March 13th, 2023 at a cost not to exceed $147,173.58, with the funds to be drawn from the contingency reserve, and that council award the construction contract for the Whispering Willow sanitary sewer looping project of Black East Site Works, limited in the amount of $116,173.58, and direct SEMA to prepare the necessary notice of award and contract documents. Good.
One thing that I didn't get a chance to touch on, thank you Judy for making that motion, but it's pulling money from the contingency reserve rather than borrowing. And, and the reason being on that, such a small amount, we do have the money in reserve. It's not going to impact our, our reserves terribly at this point, and borrowing on this for the term of 15 years was about $65,000 now. We'll still collect, as the report says, we'll still collect interest on the rate that it is because it is money that we're borrowing from municipality to pay, so it'll recover with interest, but there's no sense of council borrowing on funds that we already have. That's why the recommendation to go for contingency.
Cole, you know? I just got a curiosity. What, if this does get approved, will they have a timeline for you, or do they know when they'll start?
Oh, yeah, it sounded like they wanted to go right away.
Okay.
And the nine days, and funny enough, based on, we've had this conversation back and forth several times, this tender actually included a $500 a day over. So if they are over schedule, they lose $500 a day. Okay? I, they've never done that before, but SEMA added it based on our last contract.
Yeah, yeah, and normally it's not a thing that's put in, because quite often they'll, they'll ask for it, they do it in seven days instead of nine, then there's a, should be, they want addition. So usually it's not put in there as a penalty, so obviously, you know, SEMA has realized that there's advantages and disadvantages in that put in contracts.
One of the things you can see the big difference in, some of, one was seven days, one was nine days, 15, 10, 22, and as high as 60, somehow, yeah.
I think the 60 days was just to, to do the slotting and do that.
Yeah, to get, to get it into their schedule.
Get it into scheduling or something, because that's another thing that we talked about, it's the nine days, not nine.
Yes, nine calendar days, not nine.
Working days, so if they only work two days a week, you know, it only takes you four weeks to do it.
Yeah.
That's not the way it's going to work, so. Okay, any other question on concerns? Okay, Judy's made a motion, the, this. Hearing none, we'll call the question out of the paper. Opposed? Hearing none, it's carried, you have to answer. Thank you, moving on to the library and FCS building roof replacement. Hopefully everybody's had an opportunity to read it, I'm not sure if you can understand it, but I'll let Kim kind of fill you in.
Yeah, so Stu got the roofing company to come in, of course, part of that price was contingent on the old host tower coming down. The power is hooked to the, and I've preliminary given council the heads up, but we ran into some issues with that in talking to Fortis and our building inspector. If we move it, it has to be brought to code, and with that, we thought it would be really simple, we put up a mast, and it would, but the mast has to now come to the outside of the building, and, or the entry point has to come to the outside of the building, and we're looking at options for bringing it in. Rhodes Electric came in, gave price to Stu. Again, Stu had a really hard time with this because, you know, if he would have known about this before, it would have been included in the price when you guys approved the roofing. We've gone around, looked at other buildings in the, in the area that have had to bring theirs to code as well. I talked to Rhodes Electric to go have a look at those, see if, if some of those options. They, he figured if, the one, if they can get away with doing it that way, with the inspector on that side, that it may save about $3,000, but that's about all he's seeing, is the savings on there, so.
Is the electrical bit in there, do you know if, has it been updated, or you think we could potentially find some issues?
Not from what we're doing, because we're just basically going to the meter box and then the disconnect. It's, it's the disconnect that is very expensive.
Expensive, and is there a timeline on that?
He said he would do it as quickly as possible, he knows, he knows where we're at with the roof and that sort of thing. And just so that you all know, when Stu brought this to me, he's beaten up every option, and we even talked about, can we just leave the host tower where it is? But that's where a lot of the leaks happening, so.
Yeah, wherever you kind of flash to another entrance, or whatever, I mean, it's the same with on the very front of the library, where they attach to the pieces on the front, you know, architects draw, design all these fancy things, but then every time you put a flashing on, and by the nature, heat and cool, heat and cool, and after a while it starts to crack, and then the next thing you know, you're going to leak, so I think Stu's suggestion of eliminating the host dragon tower, since it's not being used anymore on the site, and being able to not have that flashing issue is probably the better one. I mean, it's a costing one for us, but it's, on the other hand, you know, you either bite the bullet today or bite the bullet tomorrow.
It's kind of history, having that host tower there, but I understand why it's one of the goals.
Well, originally, when it was built, it wasn't an issue, because the, the power came from a different direction too. And then when they built the senior citizens center on the side of it, then it encapsulated the host dragon tower in the center of it. And then they corrected the height issue by just attaching it to the same, to the building up, so that the power line, because you can't build, you're not supposed to be able to touch it when you're on, on the roof.
Right.
And because of where it goes in to the building now, it's in the middle of the building, not on the outside edge where it used to be originally in, and so it's... So then the code changed, you know, and so now to bring it up to code. And that, that's the same thing, you know, Kim and I, we had a huge discussion, we went around and looked at other ones too, to see if there was other opportunities to look at different options, but, you know, and, and it's pretty well isn't any, you know, it's either do it to bring it up to code, or else not touch the tower and have that potential leakage down the road.
Stu's more worried about, because it attaches to the senior, that's where the senior center will start to it as well, so. So he, we, we've beaten us up a thousand ways. None of us wanted to bring another $25,000 out of contingency, especially.
But I mean, again, going back in our philosophy of why we do have a bit of contingency is that we don't anticipate these when they were, you know, like Stu suggested, when we did the, recommended the roof, he never thought of any of this problem, until all of a sudden, then it is. Now, the advantage that we have is we do have some money in the bank, if they would go ahead.
Well, and even if Stu would have brought this to us earlier, I still would have really in favor of doing it properly, and, because long-term, it's likely the most cost efficient anyways, right?
Yeah, I personally think it's the most, again, like you said, Cole, it's, it's, it's just that unfortunately it wasn't anticipated in budget discussions or whichever, but again, you know, I'm sure that if he would have known then, he'd have increased it in the budget anyway to anticipate doing this, so.
I'll make the recommendation that council accrue the replacement of the electrical connection to the library and FCS building as per quote provided from Rhodes Electric at the cost not to exceed $25,725. The funds to be drawn from the contingency reserve.
Thank you, Richard. Any discussion on Richard's motion? Okay, hearing none, we'll call the question out of the paper. Opposed? Hearing none, it's carried, you have to answer. Moving on to the FCSs member at large appointment.
FCSs has sent their request, thank you Judy, and thank you for catching my, I have a spelling mistake on the agenda, and hopefully no one else saw it, because I got it changed as quick as I could. So, Sharling Shear's term has come to an end, so the board is recommending appointing Andrea Bradley to a two-year term. And that requires a council motion.
Okay, so we need a motion to, well? Okay, Will moves this. Any discussion on Will's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question out of the paper. Opposed? Hearing none, it's carried, you have to answer. Okay, Vulcan District Historical Society request.
So this one came through, I'm sure many of you are aware, they have the On the Spot app for Vulcan, where it brings up the historical pictures, they did a presentation for council, and, and we sent out. One thing that they would like to do alongside that is to mark the spots on the sidewalk, so when you hold the phone, you're actually looking right down in front of the exact angle that the picture was taken, so add some, add some clarity to some of the pictures they have and whatnot. It's a really good idea, they, all they're, they want to do is mark the sidewalks with a, with a spot and a logo. This, when they sent this, it's probably, it's probably not stretched exactly the same as that, but using that logo and it's just painted in black spray paint on the sidewalk. They gave all the locations of the sidewalks, we talked to Public Works about it. The comments were, if they are going to paint it, maintain it, then, because the biggest issue always becomes the maintenance, is you paint it, and with our weather, paint doesn't last on the sidewalk very long. But if they keep on top of it, and they're going to use paint, but as it says in the report, it's not slippery, those sort of things, so.
If you had the opportunity, Mance had his Clydesdale, so we did a hayride around and all beyond this. I don't know if it was all, but a majority beyond this spot, and it was very interesting.
Yeah, very well attended too.
Ray did the racial, the commentary as we were going, you went on that too?
No, I, I was just, was at the pool, and I went out when they were there, and Ray was talking, and very well attended, that one was.
And I've used the app, it works really well, I have, of course, living across from the old pool, was able to bring it up. It's really neat, right now, when you can see where the old pool used to be in the grass and hold it up, it's, it's, it's quite a good, quite a good thing to promote our community as well.
Okay, any thoughts on this one? Judy?
I'll make a recommendation that council approves the Vulcan District Historical Society's request to paint and maintain 16 marker decals on public sidewalks where they're on the spot, walking tour as presented.
Okay, any discussion, Judy's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question out of the paper. Opposed? It's carried, you have to answer. Thank you, moving on to 5.6. Barbara?
So basically, the distinguished service award nomination, this award, it recognizes elected officials in Alberta urban municipalities who have served 20 years or more in an Alberta municipality, and I would like to make the motion to nominate our mayor, Tom Grant, for this award.
Thank you. Okay, so this has to be in by the end of?
Has to be in by the end of the week. And so they do these awards at the women's convention, and when Barbara got ahold of me this morning, when I looked, I have the majority of the information, they asked for quite a bit of information with the application, photos, background, your bio, all that stuff, which I do have, so I can, I can put everything fairly quickly, but it does need a resolution from council. So, so I asked Barbara if she wanted to bring it forward to this meeting, and the timing of it, for those of you that aren't aware, October will be 25 years from Tom. He started in 95, but he took a three-year break.
Yes. Donna? Okay, thank you, I just got a motion on the floor to do this, so we, any discussion on the motion?
Did we vote it down?
That's not here. I just thought it was well-kept, so.
Thank you, so. Hearing no discussion, we'll call the question out of the paper. Opposed? Hearing none, we'll call. Okay, we have to move on. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving back to committee reports, is Food Bank minutes draft for March 16th? Judy has brought up all the information on it, but is there any questions on it there at all?
No. I, I'm just curious on our, perhaps I missed it there, but are, are the numbers increasing, like we're just hearing? You know, everything's getting more expensive, are we seeing more? More requests with Food Bank?
Yeah, so, just so you know, FCSs cannot do donations, only the Food Bank can, because we're under government restrictions there. But as soon as Food Bank puts out a request for donations, it comes in. Big people are very responsible in this community to support where needed, so.
We see stuff online, like, there's loads of bread, or bags of potatoes or stuff with it, is that getting really a good response?
Yes, and the bread comes from Cobb's Bread at Old Tokes, and you have to be there Monday morning at 6:00 a.m. And we get a call Sunday morning, and then we beg at Monday, so they, I think they get the call Sunday morning at 6:00 a.m., they have to be there to pick up the bread, and people are volunteering to go up and get that, so.
That's great.
Which is quite good.
Okay, Cole's got a comment?
I used to see kind of a box at Mitchell's right by the entrance, and I, they might have eliminated it out of COVID, but I haven't seen it in a long time. It used to be something I used to use, because it would remind me while I was in the stores, do you have a, do you know anything about?
I could check on the box, so.
There wasn't comment.
They were giving, taking a lot of food to the left fridge in bank, but now they're supporting Vulcan again, so I will check and see if we should put a box on again.
Yeah, because they would, you know, a lot of times I would make sure I picked up an item or two while I was in there, and it was, or else it just, it's not in front of my ingredients.
And they usually have a list of what's most needed at that point in time, yeah, yeah, I'll check on that too.
Yeah, that 6-1 is in there too, Judy, about that Margaret Street, so. On there, so. Okay. Okay, any other questions on that one? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the 6-2, the Vulcan County Health and Wellness Foundation minutes. April 26th. Okay, moving on to the FCSs draft minutes of April the 20th. Is Village Champion still out?
Yes, at this point, yes, we've had no requests from them.
Yeah, I, I just saw there was like 10-2, and I was just curious, I couldn't remember whether they...
Yeah, that wasn't, shouldn't have been on there.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, it's, it's great, I mean, I'm, I wasn't sure after the change down there, whether it changed or not, so.
Right now, they're still running, no?
Yeah. Okay, any questions on that one? Now for May 18th one. Okay, any questions or concerns on that one? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Marcus Foundation, April the 25th minutes. Okay, the design meeting of the 23rd. Okay, the design meeting of the 29th. It sounds like you guys had a pretty decent tour of the facilities, Judy?
Yes, very decent.
Saw some pros and cons to each one?
These and those, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, sometimes that's important, you know? Hear from other people that have done something, and thought it was a good idea, and then find out that it wasn't, or vice versa. The one that they always talk about too, and I, this might sound terrible, but most of them had a fireplace, or, or...
Yeah.
And, and I, I didn't know whether that was as big of an asset or a deployment.
And some had more than one fireplace.
Yeah. Like, I know the facility my sister's in, they, they have one on every floor, and again, you know, it's easy for me to say, well, I, you know, I don't have a fireplace, so why wouldn't we want one? But yet, you know, a lot of the seniors are cold, and be able to sit in front of it and warm up, and, and, but, you know, for me, a fireplace wasn't so much, but every one of them, there was a compact made of fireplace.
We were lucky to talk to, to some of the staff at some of these facilities, and, kind of in my report, but the one had only two sinks by the dishwasher, and they said, when the dishwasher goes out, you need three.
Yeah.
So then they're hauling, and so that's something, then you look at, at every other lodge you go to, they got three, so they learned a lesson from that, but it's...
It does make sense, you know?
Yeah, it does, yeah.
And, and in the facilities like those, that, you know, the requirements are so stringent, you know, if you don't have that third sink, you know, to rinse and, and, but, yeah, well, that's great, appreciate that. Anything else on any of those ones from Marcus Foundation? Okay, moving on to Seewa, who's the April the 28th board meeting one, and then the executive made the call. Any questions on either of those two?
Does he make the adjournment motion on both meetings?
Is that a friend?
He's taking his thunder, he gets to come just to adjourn, and just to do that, as the chair.
That's right. Okay, thank you, Will.
You might not be allowed to do it here anymore.
He didn't read anything else, so he read one.
It's a good thing he catches me on wherever I make a mistake, so, I need to be... Okay, so we're on to the attention, attraction retention one. Okay, Lyle brought this back up last month, so. Okay, and then on to the Waste Commission, the March 26th. And I apologize, I didn't get them out as quick as I should have, but I have problems with some of my emails, I can't send them forward. So it's, but wait till I get a paper copy, and then I file it, and, I mean, so that's why there's two there. Okay, any questions on any of those? If not, so we wish to?
Another reports for information.
Lyle moves. Any discussion on Will's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question out of the paper. It's carried, you have to answer. Okay, thank you, moving on to council reports, council, name yourself.
I have had meetings since the last one, I believe. I was supposed, unfortunately, I missed the parade on Saturday due to a work commitment. I probably could have snuck in halfway through, but you guys were like at the front of the parade, so. Running behind, yeah. Just talking to the public, I know through my work, I've had several people come up to me, I mean, we've all got to take it for a grain, with a grain of salt, saying, with their lack of housing inventory in town, they're saying, to, to build, there's no, there's only a couple lots owned by a few people in town, where you could build a regular single-family home, where you can put up a fence, for your kids, or your pets, or whatever, and they're saying, well, what's, what's the town, whenever they're going to, the town should develop stuff. Well, the town's not really into developing and competing against private enterprise, but... With Rita, we are looking onto at Prairie Vista Estates. I am correct with that, right, I believe I've seen that, according to the D.C. So just if people are asking, I mean, there, there are stuff available, there is stuff available. So just if people are asking, I mean, there, there are stuff available, there is stuff available. It just might not be exactly where they want. So, uh, I guess it's just a matter of when someone does make the pledge and start to build uncertain stuff. I think we are going to see, uh, a domino effect. We just need to get that first domino to fall for someone to make a move. And I think we need some competition amongst builders in town to, to just stimulate a few things. Because I've been in Oak, or Natton a few times and there's construction going on over there on three or four houses in just one area. And, uh, we're way better than Natton, so we should have more. That's my thoughts.
Yeah, and there, there is a huge discussion as, uh, you know, do we invest in the development? Like to do that development TV portion of it, it's going to probably cost us another fifteen, twenty-nine dollars. And so, um, you know, even to put in the storm and the retention and all, uh, we just finished doing the industrial and saw how much it was for just to put in a, a loop in them, chunk of water in sewer. But, um, so there was always been a discussion whether municipalities should be involved in that or whether municipalities should do it to the private enterprise. But like I said, it's pretty hard when you only have one theoretically developer that owns the land and wants to do development homes. So I appreciate their, these people's philosophies, but I'm not sure if the majority of the rate payers would like to see their taxes double or triple to, um.
Pay for it, yeah.
To pay for a subdivision too, so. And unfortunately, and again, maybe the rules have changed, the same with what the Marcus Foundation is finding that, you know, um, you know, dealing with transportation, sometimes the rules do change a little bit, but, um, my understanding was is we had to do the storm pond and storm water retention first before they would let us to build one house up there. And so, you know, again, if I'm not mistaken, it was, you know, five to ten million dollar just for storm retention and, you know, the forest main and the all that, so. Cole, yeah?
Yeah, and I, I agree with kind of what you're saying, Tom, because one thing that would concern me is the potential risk that municipality would be involved in. Like if a private entity isn't willing to do it, it's kind of, like, I don't know. You spend the money on the investment and say you don't sell or whatnot, it'd be a lot of risk involved for a municipality to get involved in that.
Well, in the on subdivision, the municipality did pay board and it took twenty-five years.
Thirty-five.
Or thirty-five years.
Thirty-five, trust.
To finish it up, sell it all. And so, again, I'm not opposed to the philosophy, you know, that, you know, but. And Natton, I think, had the same thing. They, they looked at it too and, and their first phase, you know, they sat on it for quite a while before it really went, started to move now. Their second phase is, like you said, is really going, doing quite well. Um, so I, I think that, let's not say we shouldn't look at it, but.
Well, I mean, hindsight's twenty twenty. I'm sure if our local builder knew now, a couple of years ago, what was going on, when you had, when you had two or three houses built and it took them forever to sell.
Yeah.
I, I mean, it's on the news and stuff now, like the, all of Canada is one point two million houses behind.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure how that happened, but here we are. So it's, it's not just us, it's.
Yeah, and unfortunate problem too is the, the big push to is affordability, you know? What is affordable to, you know, and I think that's where the tough one is, is, you know, is it the hundred thousand dollar houses or the, you know, half million dollar ones that, you know, is in that affordability range? And it's a tough one. I mean, I think it's something that, you know, should be on our mind, but yet, you know, again, I'm not sure how, how we can do it without looking at a major expenditure.
You will touch on it on our reports.
All right, anything else left? Okay, well, thank you, Counselor Evil.
Well, just touching on what Lyle said about her town being better. Um, talking to one of the neighbors, as Hawaii chose Vulcan, and he said, we looked at a lot of towns and Vulcan was very progressive and that's what made the decision. Was they thought they had everything, they had all the infrastructure, the schools, the pool, the hospital. And they're an older couple, but they said they felt the town wasn't standing on its laurel that it was going forward. So I thought that was an interesting comment. But anyways, so we'll go from there. You're smiling, you're thinking, all right. On May eleventh, I was at that marquee deal at the Legion, um, and then I had to leave. But, um, I, when I got back, I was at, uh, I went to Orisk on the, uh, on the first, uh, um, for their annual meeting. I found it quite interesting on the report, on the budget report, on the, uh, and I questioned it and I, last year they sold in services seven hundred and something thousand dollars. And so the budget was, they thought it hit four hundred and something and they sold eighty-five thousand and change. And there was, I, and so I said, why is it being variance? And he said, well, we were going off of everything, but he said, everything seemed to hit hard this year. And they said, so I found that quite interesting, um, but they're still, you know, not too bad of a position. They got reserves and that, but, um, yeah, so it's, uh, that was about it, nothing major. Good steak. Or two, shall I say?
Okay, well, thank you, then, Michael. Moving on to Mr. Smith, Counselor Smith.
I haven't had any meetings since our last council meeting. I meant to go to that, I wanted to go to the RCMP Town Hall, uh, but I was pretty sick last week, so I didn't want to get out. Um, other than that, I don't really have anything to report.
Well, I was at the RCMP, uh, right about the town, but we had, we had a fairly decent turnout there, I would say. I noticed some really good ideas floating around, because I think Sean did a good job.
I think I have another one, I guess, somewhere, is it, I don't know.
I had a, I had a.
I, not for a bit, I think once the new, uh.
What's, what's the new sergeant, Sierra, probably, do you support him?
Okay, anything else, Will? Okay, great, thank you. Moving on to Councilor Sanders.
On May twenty-fourth, I attended the town meeting for that hockey team proposal that the county rep and Frisco Che, and that was really interesting. And now I hear it's a, it's a goal. Um, I also heard that he was in town over Spock days. I don't know if that was Friday or Saturday, and he was talking to business owners and it's, all, all I heard was good things. I didn't.
He and his partner showed up to do a couple different things and phoned Chris to ask what was going on. Because there was people everywhere and they were pretty excited about that. And Chris was good enough to tell them that was a normal Saturday at town.
So that was good to hear.
Lights a parade.
On, uh, May twenty-fifth, I was picked up at eight-thirty. We headed to Raymond, um, Lodge for ten-thirty. Uh, Raymond is, uh, Raymond Bridge View was built in two thousand nineteen, uh, called Diamond Will. It has forty rooms. And then, um, Natasha from M Three Developments, that's our project manager, came down and, um, met us down there. We would have had her ride with us if we'd known she was coming for sure. Um, then McGrath was built a year later in two thousand twenty. Um, it has thirty self-contained and sixty Lodge, so it was quite a bit bigger. Um, we found Raymond had huge storage rooms and that, that were not being used. Huge basement, you went down there and you felt like you were an auditorium and that wasn't even going into a room. And then we found McGrath to be a lot smaller, didn't like going down the basement. But we found what, what was waste and what was not waste. So it was really interesting to see those were both Alberta government built. And so they showed out a lot of deficiencies because Alberta government hired the lowest contractor. And so there was, there was issues. So it, that's why we're happy we're not going to Alberta government. A lot of people think we should go through there, but, um, we have more control over that. Um, like I said, it gave us a really good overview of the do's and don'ts. Uh, lots of notes and pictures were taken. We've got a, a needs list. I think our warrant list is, um, gone, that's because our needs list, um, you don't know how many needs there are until you start looking at these. Um, May twenty-ninth, uh, on that AHPP, I think it's been extended to September with the new government coming in. So I think it was September. May twenty-ninth, um, we left at six AM in the morning. I drove this time. We went up to Calgary, um, the building committee minus chemicals. And we picked up Natasha from M Three Developments again at Crossiron Mills. And, um, we went to Red Deer Crimson Village Lodge, Lodge, and that was built by Alberta Social Housing in two thousand twenty-one. Um, Corey met us there. He's our architecture from JMAA Architecture Design. So he met us there because he, he built all four of these and that's why we turned those. Um, the south ones were two, one was three level. The McGrath one was three level and they were more of an L. And Crimson Village is a U and that's what we were, we're looking at, is a U shaped, um, building. Then we went to back to the JMAA offices. It was time for our in, in-person meeting, so we thought, well, we're up there, let's just go do it at JMAA. They're in the old train station downtown Red Deer, so it's pretty neat to, to go into that building. We had lunch, did our meeting there, um, where the rest of the M Three team joined us online. And Talina, the designer, joined us in the room. Talina also came with us. We went off to Innisfail next and to turn Autumn Glen, which was built in two thousand twenty. Arrow points is there? Um, we look, uh, sent out, um, for construction manager, an RFQ, request for qualification. It ended May thirty-first, we got six applicants, it was shortlisted to five. So pretty soon we'll be doing interviews for the construction manager. Um, Corey hasn't heard back from Alberta Transportation yet. However, Kelly Nelson talked to Doug Hendricks and he believes it's not good to have service trucks going in the residential area in Allen Subdivision. So Doug will be talking to Alberta Transportation, so we'll see where that goes. So we're making plans on whether we have to go one way or we can have an entrance for service. On March thirtieth, we had a Marcus Foundation supper. Uh, we've been doing supper meetings now with the residents. It's quite interesting. We sit at different tables every time and the information, the history that those residents have, it's, it's quite entertaining to be able to do that. We need a new boiler in the Peter Dawson Lodge, here goes our money pit. And so we're applying for a grant, which is supposed to be, um, coming through fairly quick, I think. And that would help us cover the cost of this boiler. Um, motion was also made at this meeting to commit one point two five million for the AHPP application, which would come out of our reserves. So, which would really take our reserves down, but we've got a year to build them up so that that money is available. The hope is to, um, go to large businesses, service clubs, like your G three and your solar farms and that, to get donations and sponsorship to assist them, um, Marcus Foundation. As I said before at the presentation, if you were there, we only had ten percent. The government requires fifteen percent. And, um, so to try to build up, we're hoping, because we've got a little bit more time, to go out and maybe get some sponsorships and donations so that we can make it up to that fifteen percent that's required by the government. Um, June seventh was at the RCMP Town Hall meeting in Champion. I thought it too, it was, it was well received and good attendance. June eighth was grade twelve grad, that was a full day, um, but it was a great day. June ninth, um, so just so you know, we meet every week. So one week we meet on Zoom, our teams, we meet on teams, and the next week it's an in-person. And, um, I gave an agenda to Tom and Grant tonight. There's a lot we cover on these meetings. It's, um, it's, everything's moving so fast and we have to make a lot of big decisions.
Is that Marcus Foundation meeting?
Yes, Marcus Foundation, yeah, but it's, it's the building committee, which I'm on, under the Marcus Foundation. But it's, it's, so it's a separate committee. Um, we call it the senior housing, I think, on ours and county calls with the bidding, building committee, so. That's, I've always used building committee, the county doesn't care. I got to come up the altar. Um, so at, uh, we had, uh, on June ninth, we had a building, uh, committee teams meeting with Derek Wees. There's two main, uh, main items, uh, getting letters of support from MLAs and MP. We've already received this go on our AHPP application. Joseph Shaw gave us a really nice, um, a letter of support. And, uh, we need to get our press release done. We've gone over it and I think it should be out, so it should be out in the next Alton Advocate. I'll have to go on and check that. I haven't checked with Lori, but she was supposed to have that out. And you haven't received anything to go on the town website.
I have.
So I'll check on that. To me, it was supposed to be out by now. Um, it was busy. I never looked because of grad celebrations and Spock days weekend. We went over the operational, uh, strategy last spring. Uh, Derek, there was fifty-seven apps went to the AHPP, they had one in the spring. Um, they took seventeen, were approved by the government with the amount of fifty-seven million. Of that, Derek got forty percent of the money. Um, he had five applicants in there and all five of them were approved. So I asked the question, with our, uh, application being, would it be weaker with only the ten percent? And he said, yes. So our goal now is to go out and, um, to different groups and see if we can get some money donated. And, and what we need right now is letters of financial support. And that would go on our AHPP application to make it stronger. I can tell you that Carmen Gaye has given the written support, but no financial support. They will not be, um, financially supporting it. Um, Lomond and Arrowood haven't responded back to my knowledge. Arrowood I had heard, but you can't go by one, when a person says, it sounded promising. But, um, if no support, any village that does not financial support will not be recognized at this building. The rest of them will be, all the municipalities, county town will be on a, on a big donation sponsor board within the facility. So they will not be acknowledged or given any recognition whatsoever. Um, they said, Derek said, we might be asked what's in it for them. So at our meeting tomorrow morning at ten, we have an in-person at Peter Dawson Lodge for the building committee. We'll have M Three and JMAA there, is what's in it for them. So, um, I'm going to, the question I'll be asking is can we do a community room, a meeting room? Because we're going to have to have a board room too. Something that maybe the Lions or the Kinsmen or someone can put their name on it. There's, uh, going to be roof patio. Um, would G three like to sponsor the roof patio? And there's going to be, um, gardens and that. So that's what we're looking at, is getting some support through there. June tenth, what a busy day. Uh, attended the Lion's Breakfast, walked in the parade and, um, Randy rode right beside Richard. And she said she was going to walk, but she was quite comfortable with Richard. I don't know why, but they had fun. She's kept saying, I had so much fun.
She did, she had a gas.
We ate food at the food trucks, we took in the historical hayride. Um, we went to the Family Fun Fair for two hours and we went up at the, um, Virginia Mitchell Park. We ate hamburger and watched a baseball game. So we took it all in and I just have to say, well done, Vulcan. Well done to the Spock days organizations because they did a fantastic job. If you were bored, you weren't, you weren't being involved. It was, it was exciting. Uh, so like I said, tomorrow we have our, our meeting at ten o'clock. I have, uh, put out an invitation to Tom and, and Kim. If they present the interesting on that agenda, they want to be a part of them, they're more than welcome to attend.
Okay, any questions for Judy? Thank you very much for.
I actually have one. What, uh, you said that if they don't donate, they don't get their name on. What's a minimum donation? Do you have an idea, like in a small town like Carmen Gaye or Mayo, or like, is there a minimum they're looking for?
They do a percentage. I can tell you that Carmen Gaye's is sixteen thousand and forty.
Okay, thank you.
You know, the, the one method that might appease or should. You know, the one method that might appease, or should say appease, but make some of the ones that are having potential issues financially is to do it over a period of time.
Yeah, the debt is being offered.
Offered, which I think would be great, too, because, you know, I mean, the letter of support, I think, is excellent and appreciated, but I mean, you know, for some of them to put it over a five-year period, because it's, you know, very, like the comments that were made at the meeting is that we don't need it today, but we need it tomorrow, you know, type thing.
2024, probably near the end.
So again, if they might be able to say, hey, over four or five years, we can budget for it and, you know, or commit, I think would be a huge asset to the municipalities.
I didn't, because it was such a busy week with Brad, and that I didn't get a chance to go on and check counties, but I know it was being brought up to offer that to some villages, so I don't know what vote was on that. I can't speak for that, but I know they did talk about it.
That's good, because, yeah, I know that, you know, some of them are definitely feeling the pinch, but I think we all feel the pinch.
Yeah.
Just a different pinch.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, Judy. Okay, moving on to councillor work coffee.
So May 24th, I came and listened to the hockey football, which I thought was great. I had the Vulcan County Health and Wellness Foundation meeting on May 21st. Unfortunately, I was out of town, so I couldn't go to the place they went last week. So that's all I have had.
Okay, any questions for Barbara?
Okay, thank you, councillor Lynn. I haven't had any meetings in the last few weeks. I've got a Southborough meeting, I think it's on the 22nd of this month. I also attended all the Spock Days festivities, or a lot of them anyways. I got a lot of complaint, or not complaints, compliments, sorry. I thought it was wire works.
Oh, yeah.
There was a lot of people enjoyed that, including myself, so it's well done. Parade was really well attended, I thought. Pretty focused. I think the ball tournament Beer Gardens was very well attended, very well organized. If there was any complaint, I had a few people approach me, multiple people about the ball diamond conditions and how dry they were. And I've kind of, so I would inquire about it a bit, but dry here, but there was a lot of people asking if they could be watered more. So that is not like concrete. The ground, the grass was pretty brown.
Is that irrigated?
It is.
It is? Because I had Ron Barnes, I could use his name, but he said they were, they were, and it was so dusty, we could hardly see the players.
It was bad. But, I mean, a lot of that's the infield, too, where it's going to be dry in there, but the outfield, if there's like, there's, when you took a step on it, the dust would come up. So it was, we could use some rain to help that, but.
We got it.
You got a lesson?
If we don't get it, maybe we could put a little more on to it.
Yeah, and they do usually shut the sprinkler system down before the tents are put out, because potentially the tents, so they shut it down on the Thursday, because they usually come the day before. So they didn't water really Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday at all because of it.
Because everything had moved around up there.
Yeah.
Do they water Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
Well, they, they sometimes...
They're on the regalia watering schedule, so.
There is a watering schedule.
So they're all on timers and run from the concession bill for all the different zones.
But I do know that they, they did shut down early because of the potential.
There's some areas where camping's allowed, those sort of things are all under irrigation as well. Spock Days, they let everybody camp everywhere, so they also shut down that as well. Well, and I just, the extra traffic on the diamonds, like they were quite busy, so, and the heat and the wind, I guess, was pretty bad. Yeah, so. Facilities tour here with your pet. That's right. I have my daughter in council office. She wanted to see where I went, where nights, so now she knows to watch live television and, uh, it's not this chair.
Say hi, honey.
I don't think she's watching.
You can play it for her later.
Well, if she does watch, it'd probably only be for about two seconds. Pretty boring. Yeah, it was a great weekend. I, Jordan and Chris Lawis did a great job of the organization of the tournament, Chris and O'Chane. I thought it was really well done.
Okay, anything else? Cool. Thank you. Yeah, I attended the hockey meeting, and because of the release of some of the information like Kim said, that sounds like it's going to be a great opportunity for us to host them and see how things go this next year. I, too, was at the RCMP Town Hall, and I appreciated Sean and the young lady that came out.
Laura.
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 Yeah, that came out for her. And I also saw Sean on Saturday and said that, you know, I thought that it was great that they, you know, tried it in a different location. I think that it's great for a lot of these organizations to kind of move around a little bit if they can throughout the county. So he said that he'd bring out two of the new gentlemen, and maybe there'd be an opportunity to have it in another community and get some of the people out. I was in the parade and appreciate the people, everybody that could come out and participate with it. And it was, like you said, it was a great parade, and I think everybody had a good time. Same with the Spock Days community itself. I know there's few and far between some of them that do the organization, but, you know, hats off to all of them for all they have, all they did. And even our public works, I think that they need a pat on for participating. And I guess, exactly what, you know, Cole said, you know, there are times where there are areas of question or concern, but overall, our community was clean and nice and neat, and, you know, they tried to get Main Street looking good with the painting and lines and all that. So I think that hats off to the, to the, our public works people. Those are the committees, the meetings that I have attended, and I've got some coming up, but, yeah, that's it. Judy?
I'll just say, I walked looking for turkeys at the Virginia Mitchell Park and over by the ball diamonds and that, and there was very little garbage there. I was very impressed. So if it's the town crew, then hats off to them, or if it was the organizers, it was just the odd beer can here and there. Was that you?
No, I was just going to say, I noticed 4-H Club were picking up cans, and I know, I noticed actually a lot of small children picking up garbage and stuff, too, so just as a reminder, I guess.
That's brilliant.
And I think it's great, great pride, you know, I mean, it's, you know, our weekend, you know, sponsored or supported by the businesses in the Spock Days, by the, you know, like I said, hats off to everybody that was participated or whatever. Like you said, I can never prove, you know, Stu and I were talking about it Sunday and we came up about it, and, you know, generally, all we usually do here about it, the odd complaint, you know, very little this year, so hats off to all of them.
I know the Lions Breakfast went over huge. There was a lot of people that came out for breakfast, so I think they, just in donation, raised around a grand, so, you know, that's pretty good, yeah. And, yeah, so there was, then they did the roof toll, and I'm thinking they raised another 1,400 bucks there, so, yeah, so.
We're quite fortunate. We do have some great groups, you know, I mean, we got Show and Shine coming up and Flying Breakfast and...
Tractor Pull.
Tractor Pull on July 1st. I mean, we've got some things coming up, so I think it's great to see that, you know, the community supports these functions that are being put on, and again, you know, to the organization for doing it. Like, you know, even the Hundredth, I didn't know, hear much about the Hundredth for the golf course, but heard it went over well, so.
Really good.
Okay, so that's it for me. Any questions for me on any, if not somebody wished, councillor, whatever? Any discussion, or any response? Here now, questions, favor? Scared. Okay, moving on to the administration reports, activity.
I'm going to apologize. I realized this morning that, well, actually, it was later in the day. This is last month's report. So we did accomplish everything from the last meeting, most of those letters and the approval for the paving, so all of that has been taken care of. So I do apologize, you've seen this report already once, unless anything's changed since the last time you read it. I do apologize. I'll, we'll have it updated for the next meeting. And move on to my COAL report, if you'd like. So fairly busy three weeks between the community meetings, so we've got the final inspections done in the industrial, so they're signed off, and now all we have outstanding is the holdbacks. We're going to finish playing Blacky Side Works, and then we hold back for 45 days, case that anything else comes up under the contract, but we should be able to wrap that up, and there will be the warranty on the sewer water lines. So we've got that done. Obviously, we got the Whispering Willows tender reviewed. We've got everything ready, and we've posted the sports court tender now, so it's out getting bids as we speak. It will be, it will come back for the next meeting with a recommendation on the end. We have submitted a repair plan for the second avenue. Stu and I were able to get in contact with CPR, at least, and work with us on that, and we're going to work it into our street programs, you know, funds that you approved for doing the avenues. And when Stu talked to Grindstone, he felt that they should be able to do some of the skins on that approach to the tracks inside their, inside their codes, so hopefully, if everything goes the way that it's supposed to. So that, we got done, had a meeting with the community, said, blue chair, it wasn't a formal meeting, it was just more on some history and some of the things that they can, projects that they can look at in the future, those sort of things. They've had quite a few J-jo group folks that are on that committee, so it was good to let them know some of the history and where we come from since 2001 when they started. So HTS is still working on our telecommunications audit, got just about everything done. We're still having some troubles with Business Connect, some of the weird little things. We park a column, then we ring at the pool. So some of those things, we're getting those straightened out slowly, and it's looking like his audit, conservatively, will probably save us about a thousand bucks a month. So we're looking forward to getting that finalized as well. Finished up the split fall claim with the insurance. They have everything. They don't feel that it's going to be forward, but they have all the documentation for that. Tax notices obviously were sent out. Everybody, if you see, there's, you're more than welcome to come sit in here in the office while people come into paint. There's all kinds of good to have. Hey, it's a full next week, lots of questions, but nobody's giving us too hard a time, yeah. Various community member inquiries, lots about tax rate. We had an interesting one with the tax sale where a property was sold, and we got ahold of us and wanted to buy it, so we're trying to figure out how that works inside the MGA, and we're working with them to get that done. A lot of us Spock Days, those sort of things. We'll spend some time with the hockey committee, with the hockey proposal, and then we met with them on site as well, and we're basically told what council had said about, you know, schedule them in, make sure it doesn't affect minor hockey skate club, that sort of thing, see how it goes. Entered into some talks about dressing rooms, things like that, what they've done in those other facilities. They've, they've made accommodations for a dressing room, you know, on a temporary basis, like almost like an aqua trailer beside, just for a temporary, and they were willing to look at that option, and they'd be willing to do all of that work, so it gave us some confidence that we could definitely make the work proposal. That's why they did the press release, so they're very excited about coming, so. We had a small celebration, retirement celebration here in the town office for Janice. She didn't want to make a plow of any time, so we had a, just a, we shut down the office for an hour, and everybody came, public works guys and everybody, and a few people, she did what she passed, came back, and we had a quick lunch and shared some stories. She wandered out the door at 1:30 and came back the next day. And then picked up something she forgot, which was good. No, it was good. My formal meetings, obviously, we did, we had that hockey meeting where just when everybody was here, sports courts reviewing the drawings with SEMA, and getting that tender finalized to what it needed to be, old Chris and Stu were part of that meeting. Benchmark assessments came in and met with me before, right as we were putting out the tax, like, you put the date, you put out the tax notices, because of course, as you know, you can't argue the tax rate, but you can argue your assessments. We had a good conversation about phone calls that he was going to be getting. He let me know it was across the board, municipalities that he looks after, a lot of them were conservative, like as yourself with that lot, not, no rate, so, but also reaffirmed to it me that we still have a long ways to go to get to market value here, so we're going to see our assessment go up again, so that's something to keep in mind for setting the rates in the future as well. He's, he's working as hard as he can to get things back to market value, but it's rising so quick that they're having trouble.
I just have one question. Are you done?
Good. Just that part. The hockey tour, and then, as Lyle alluded to, both Rita and I met with Widmark Dolphins at Leffridge, and talked to them about opportunities within our community, and right from very distance states to even the lots that are being underutilized in the, by the private, by the private owners in the Whispering Creek, Whispering Greens area. And they are very interested, and they were going to go back, find some numbers and see there. And they, they live more in a market of, you know, when they say affordable housing, they don't mean subsidized housing, they mean affordable housing. They put up a house that people can afford to, new young families can afford to, and that's really where their market, they look, a lot of multifamily residential, those sort of things. So they were very interested in that for our community, recognizing from just their little bit of research where our market is, there's, we have waiting lists on rental properties, things like that, so. So they were very interested on that side. Again, we showed them the very distance states. They, as developers, immediately recognized the capital that would have to go into that, so they were hesitant on, you know, giving us a big smile, saying, sure, anything's possible, but they were also really, really positive about wanting to be working in the area and that sort of thing, so that went very well. We've also been working with our other developer, who's actively trying to end with the Willows. He's looking at development agreement, and as soon as we get that line in, he wants to get the software orders that are on those properties lifted, and he wants to do the same type of house where it's not a $500,000 house. He wants in that $300,000 range where, you know, a starter family can come in and move in. So, yeah, those, both were excellent meetings and pretty promising. And then last was the RCMP meeting that we met to in Champion. Tom and I had some time to drive around Champion and Vulcan, and we looked at a lot of things and saw a lot of things that we had. RCMP meeting itself was very good. They had a pretty good turnout of actually general public and councils there as well, so good questions. It's pretty hard when they ask you what their priorities, and you don't, they want public input for their priorities, and everybody just wants to be protected, right? So until something happens with you, you don't know what that priority is, so. So it looks like it probably stays the same, traffic control, presence in our communities is where they're focused, so it was a good meeting.
Richard?
Yeah, just on that insurance, where did this, where did this fall happen?
Without going anywhere, I will not go much further.
Okay, I'll, I'll call you tomorrow.
It was a location downtown, and someone slipped in, fell on the road during the rain.
Okay. I'll call.
Okay. It's kind of funny, but RCMP won their, one person was saying about the sheriffs. The next day, I went to Leffridge and met four sheriffs between Champion and Leffridge.
They heard you.
Yeah, they did. They must have... Yeah, they did, they must have.
They must have heard you.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't me that asked the question, but I mean, I go, well, and all of a sudden, you know, they were there, so, I mean, they have a different colored one vehicle, that's totally different, but once you get to the side, if it says the sheriff on it, but it was a half ton, it was black. But it has this nice big blue sheriff logo on, on the side.
Did you notice while you were passing it or?
Oh, yeah, no, he had somebody stop. No, they, they generally don't make much money off of me, so I'm one of the few that.
Sets the cruise control.
Set the cruise control and when it says a hundred, I might go a hundred and two, but that's nothing. Anyway, okay, any questions on, for Kim at all? Okay, if not, we will move on to the development officers. So those are some of the parts.
And Rita also mentioned in there about the meeting with the developer and she's also continuing to work for that feasibility study for the, for the hotel as well.
You know, they have a timeline for that.
Feasibility study, we need to get the money from BUDS first. But yes, well, they, it'll be, maybe she was working with them, I believe today, she, I don't know, they're, they're gonna go through the contract and.
Okay, moving on to the public works.
He wasn't able to mention it in his report, but Sunday, during Spock days and just because of the timing, they came back and re-lined the sewer line in front of the school, so the, the three hundred block went Sunday morning.
Twelve thirty.
Tom, Tom, I said, I sent him a text message at seven thirty and he was, he, I live across the street, but somehow he beat me there.
There is a, it's down there, that's a sample of what it looks like, what they put in there, it's really quite neat and how the process works and.
They were really good about it because it is, part of it's pretty dangerous because they blow fourteen hundred degrees steam into it while they're, while they're curing it and everything. But they were really good because that, Brad, that does work, he's very passionate about what he does. So he stood and he explained every part of what they do and he'll do it for anybody that wants to learn. And as long as you stand back and do the trailer while they're doing the work and, you know, they, they even, my son came out and they even ran over earplugs for him and just said, you know, keep right back here. He stood there for what, forty-five minutes watching?
Yeah, it's, it's really neat, I mean, to think that, you know, they, they bring in this reefer truck with the pipe in it and they, then all of a sudden they put steam to it and, and.
First they unload about seventy bags of ice off of it.
Yeah, but it was kind of neat though, you know, they stuck it down the hole, but they didn't even have to go down in the manhole. He was able to get, go into the, into the pipe and then all of a sudden, next thing you know, it's popping up up the other end, up through the ground, up to the manhole down there.
It's like a, like plaster scene that looks like it comes right out of the hole and onto the ground.
And you go, you know, you wondered how they could make it maneuver to get it around, but it was so neat that, yeah, I was, I was shocked. Cause I thought, well, they'll have to send a guy down that manhole and, you know, and all of a sudden they got this big pipe and this device on top of it. How is he gonna get down into that manhole to get in there, but obviously, this wasn't their first rodeo and, wow, it was really neat.
Really, yeah, by, by nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
They were, they were curing and then basically they get the line in there, they cure it with the steam for two and a half to three hours and then they cool it for two hours and that's when they can go in and cut everything. And they were packed up and out of town. So we were, we were a little concerned because that one intersection was to the Ball Diamonds, the internet was still on, but I talked to Chris and it didn't sound like we received any complaints about that. They, they had the streets blocked off so most people could get around, other than the area where we were working.
And the major reason they wanted to do it on Sunday too is the school, you know, being closed down so that they could not have to worry about that extra flow because they can't have water flowing down it and so they even opened up the manhole and, but there's two lines out of the school and, you know, so they have to.
Manhole at the school, they had a back truck sitting on because it wasn't completely shut off, so. So it went very, went very well, aside from all the rest of the work that Stu did for Spock days.
It's kind of too bad Kurt, Kurt Slevin, Tom, I always liked him as a worker when he hauled grain for Ballco. He was my favorite because, man, he could shovel grain.
He has an opportunity for another job and he will be, he's a, he's a good equipment operator and fit into the crew very well. But again, he's young and has an opportunity, but.
Yeah, I saw him today, yeah, I went out to the shop to take, you know, get the float, some of the work on some of the stuff on the float and he came over and thanked me for, you know, being able to work in the community, really enjoyed it, you know, I mean, so he's not leaving on a sour note at all.
Sounds like he's gonna come, I guess I should call that, but yeah, he's gonna, still gonna live here. Yeah, it's not surreal about it, so.
That's good.
I just wanna give a big thank you to the town crew too for that spring cleanup. For those of us in the village that have access to a truck, that's, that's huge. And I saw them hauling fridges or deep freezes and I cut the tree, like, it's, it's really appreciated by the residents, I'm sure, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and I know that even, Dick Ellis made a comment too, how, how, over the years, how it's progressed and, you know, the methods that the town has done and that on the side of the Waste Authority that they're really impressed, you know, how much, you know, you don't have to worry about not being sorted properly and homework, so again, kudos to them.
We have concerns, people will put all of their stuff out and they'll only see the wood getting picked up. People are concerned, oh, like, I left more on there, the guys go around every day, they do a little wood, they do a little metal, maybe we'll add it so they can be sorted, we'll take it out of Waste Authority and it's so much simpler for everybody, yeah.
So I, I think it is, you know, it's something that we offer, you know, twice a year and it's gone back, I don't know how many years it's been that, you know, the public works has done it, but it's been, and some years, there's lots of stuff put out and yet some years, there's very little, but like you said, you need for people that don't have a ability to have a access to a vehicle to take it, that's really what we're talking about, so. Okay, anything else on shoes? I see you got his new toy too.
His new mower?
Lulun mower, so.
But Amanda and I were checking for it.
Yeah, I saw that, we saw that too.
The other day.
Okay, we'll move on to community services then.
Yeah, and this is just at the end of, end of May, so obviously quite a bit has happened in the last week or so, so. They're very happy with his numbers at the pool and he's very happy with the numbers for Ballcon.
So for the camps, they don't ever do a full day camp, is that a possibility for working people to have?
No, they do quite a few full day camps.
Do you know which ones are? I can talk to Chris.
Yeah, and I believe the rec guide has whether they're full or not as well in there. Yeah, they do quite a few full day camps.
I don't know, it's on the website.
What is it this morning?
Under, under recreation.
Okay, any other questions on crisis? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the peace officer.
So there was other officers in Ballcon for Spock days, does Spock days committee request that? Is it, how do we get, or Champ, RCMP?
Sean didn't know whether.
Yeah, the sheriffs can come in because they're provincial, they can go where and when, whenever, so they write it themselves. They're sheriffs, they can, they can do that, they're part of the provincial police force. But we also have the town peace officer, county peace officer and the RCMP, we're all working together to.
Yeah, those are the only ones I saw, but I just heard comments that they were ignorant and religious people, but they never gave them tickets, they were just.
Yeah, there was a couple sheriffs that came in and I just heard this through, through Second Avenue, but I heard that there was some sheriffs that weren't local, that weren't being very kind.
Yes, that's what I heard and I said, well, they weren't ours, were they? And I said, because, and they said, oh, no, they didn't know if they were, they were different.
I reviewed their reports for Spock days and it seemed everything went very, very well, very, very few incidents. And, yeah, pretty pleased with the way things went this year. Now they're getting set up for two man this weekend, so Gabby will be in the tent at Salt Lake for that as well on Saturday.
Gabby and Justin were very visible and it was nice, yeah, visiting these people.
Okay, anything else on Gabby's? Okay, now we'll move on to our chief as two, the April and the May.
Actually, I have a question about that. I did have people ask me about, on the weekend, about fire restrictions, so I'm not very up to, up to speed on that. In order to have a fire in town, you have to have it in an approved pit, so they don't have any restrictions because if it's in an approved pit, there's no way for it to escape, to escape. So it would take something extraordinary for the fire chief to put a ban on it in town.
Sure.
Some people question why the fireworks went ahead, was that, but they didn't go high, so I imagine it was well contained.
They, they had permits from the county.
It was, it was a hassle, I mean, because of it being dry.
Yeah.
But then we had fire trucks on scene too.
Yeah, I knew you would, so.
Will, did you have a comment too?
I did, oh, yeah, a big, sorry, a big thing, I always see people asking questions because they see the county has a fire restriction on, but the towns and the villages aren't a part of those restrictions, right, so.
I did not know that, to be honest with you. For, for the jurisdiction of the town, Ballcon, the fire chief, who is for Station Twenty Seven, represents the town for, for those decisions. So if he wanted to put a ban on it, he would call me and I would send it over to you, but it would take something extraordinary to put a ban on it in town because you're not allowed to have a fire unless it's in an approved pit or an approved duty. We did see Will from fifteen to third, you lost three members? Are you one of those, are you one of those members or?
No, so there's just, there's some members who have, you know, his attendance was low, so we had to have a conversation with him, whether it was time to, to tell him not, kind of thing.
Okay, any other questions or comments on Peter's?
I guess just the, our ambulance isn't staying in our community as much again?
It's actually just been more, we get five calls, five regular calls on the day and the first one takes our ambulance to Calgary and then we, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Are you ready?
Okay, need a motion for the administration reports?
Don't pay attention.
So was that Will for you, for the administration reports?
Yeah.
Will Lewis, administrative reports, any question on Will's motion? Hearing none, a call question. Okay, now we need one more motion.
I'd like to.
Okay, Will Lewis, your question on Will's motion, hearing none, a call question. Miracle Fish, Jordan, thank you, everybody.